...has a plan?
Yeah.
And is there anything between the Diet Two page and the Full Banquet Forty page?
If I may, through the -- through Council President, is it -- technically, no, because, I mean, there is an explanation of what we changed, and then there's what we changed. And if I -- typically, what happens is if you try to explain what you changed in detail, it winds up longer than the -- than the change itself. I can give anybody that wants, there's a series of correspondence between, that's all public records, always been available, I've always offered it, a series of correspondence between the Planning Department and the statewide planning. Somebody told me they already have the statewide letter, I can gladly give you that, too. Statewide's letter and the department's response. There is a series of, I think, one, two, at least three responses to the state, because we did it in sections.
Council Vice President Navarro.
Thank you. Mr. -- if I may, through the chair, I just want to ask Mr. Lapola, just to, kind of just, um, clear it up for me as far as where we are with this, because my understanding is we already approved the comprehensive plan as a council.
Correct.
And then it went to the state, and the state made amendments to it.
Now, if I may, again, through the chair, is we sent -- you approved what you have in the city today, much like you did in 1992, a locally adopted comprehensive plan.
That's just what I just said. We approved a local comprehensive plan, and we sent it to the state. Is that correct?
Yes.
So now the state kicked it back to us because they made some other changes.
State sent us a back, once approved, we sent it to the state for review.
Right.
For consistency. The state has made suggestions as to how the plan should be amended. They didn't amend it, they made suggestions. The department made those changes in consultation with the state.
Okay.
The state reviewed those changes and said, basically, if you do those changes...
Will approve, they'll approve it.
They will adopt the comprehensive plan. So now what's before, as I said earlier, what's before the council is, and it's a simple question, is you have a choice of having a locally adopted comprehensive plan, which is there, and I mean, I can go through the changes, it does not, it should have been done in the public forum, and/or adopting the changes that have been approved by the state and have moved the comprehensive plan towards a point to, um, to where the state can adopt it, and we have both a locally, you know, state-approved comprehensive plan. Now, I'm going to say not to be difficult, which means I am going to be difficult, you guys need to be thinking about...
Mr. Lapola.
Yeah. Slow down.
And speak it to the microphone.
You need to be thinking about the timeframe on this, because there's a slight other problem, is if we do this in September, if this gets amended, and we have to go through the amendment process, there's major amendments to this. This has to, you may not be able to do this by October. If this doesn't get done by October, it doesn't come back for two years.
Mr. Lapola, Mr. Lapola, Mr. Lapola.
Yeah.
When you speak, speak through the chair, look at me, speak into the microphone so everyone can hear, never mind them, they ask the questions through the chair. So speak to me.
All right.
So let me, stop.
Yeah.
We approved the comprehensive plan. What the councilmen are asking for are what significant amendments were made after we let it go. There has been discussion about powers of the Planning Commission, that comes in in the definitions, is that correct? That's part of the ordinances that we did not put forward. Is that correct? Yes or no?
That's correct.
That's not a change that was made on the comprehensive plan.
No.
They gave power to the Planning Commission.
No.
So I think what Mr. Stychos is asking for is, you gave us a two-page explanation, there's a forty-page documentation between the state and you. I think what he's asking for is something in between, to take those particular points that you made and just explain them a little bit further, and how they affect what we, what is different from what we approved at the approval of the comp plan on the local level. So can you provide that at the next meeting?
I can, I can provide, it's basically, I can try to provide, but if you really want to know what the changes are, the changes are the responses to the state. I can provide, try to provide a more detailed explanation, but the explanation that was provided is basically that detailed explanation. The changes are, is we agreed that, under the old comp plan, we set two things under land use, or several things under land use, but they basically referred to how we were going to do zoning, is we were going to not change the zoning on open space for private property owners if they objected, and that was basically a violation of law, because we have to be consistent, so we agreed to say that we would, if private property owners refused to go to open space...
Mr. Lapola.
Yeah.
Excuse me. You know what you're telling us right now?
Yeah.
Can you just put that on a piece of paper?
It is.
No, it was, it was not in the explanation that you're giving now.
Yeah.
I read, I read the same two-page document that Councilman Stychos did.
All right, I can, I'll provide a more detailed explanation.
That's what we need. So, Councilman Stychos, you finished?
Councilman Arquetteau had his hand up before I...
Thank you, Council President. I just have one question for Mr. Lapola, through the chair. You mentioned if this isn't passed by September, what is the deadline? What's the official deadline from the state for this comprehensive plan?
There is, there is no official deadline.
So then we have till December?
No, you don't.
We have till January of 213?
No, you don't. Is, is, is November, whatever, you have a new council.
Correct.
Is the members of the council who weren't on that board, and there's going to be a significant number, can't vote on this, because you can only vote in a public hearing on those things that you sat in on. So as of the end of October, this dies, this does not get approved, this is in effect denied. By charter, I can't bring it back for two years, unless there's a substantial and material change. So we have to, till the end of October? Yeah. Okay. Unless, unless you rule that something that dies in committee isn't denied.
I think although the election is in November, the current office...
They will go through December, that's right, that's right.
We don't kick them out right away.
Council Vice President.
Just, through the chair, Mr. -- I want to ask Mr. Lapola, one more. Mr. Lapola, on the, um, now you mentioned that it could stay, we can utilize the local approval of the comprehensive plan, which we approved, or you could have one that is approved also locally, but also by the state.
Yeah.
Just clarify for me, isn't there a, like, state law, though, saying that the local one has to be approved by the state?
No.
So...
Yes, yeah. No.
They're confusing.
Is what state law says, is that when a community adopts the comprehensive plan at the local level, there is a locally approved comprehensive plan. For all local land use actions, that has the force of law. What your charter says is the comprehensive plan has the force of law upon adoption, that all land use decisions shall be consistent by charter with the future land use plan. That's even above state law. Is what the state law then says is we are to submit that for review and adoption, that we are required to submit for review and adoption by the state, is, and if the state doesn't, they've changed their procedures, if the state doesn't adopt it, is, you can have a problem. As I said, there's no requirement for state to be consistent with your plan.
What's the problem?
First of all, this, once the plan, there's two problems. Once the plan is adopted, any action of the state must be consistent with the future land use plan, with the comprehensive plan. If it's not adopted by the state, the state is not bound by that plan. It can do whatever it wants in the city of Cranston, and then we have no recourse saying it has to be consistent with the plan. That's number one. And number two, is they're tying funding, discretionary funding, to an adopt, state-adopted comprehensive plan, more and more so, so that in the future, and we're beginning to see that now, in the future, when there is discretionary grants out there, if you don't have an adopted comprehensive plan, you may be, you may be excluded for applying for state funds, grants, discretionary grants. So there are penalties attached. Does not relieve us of zoning consistency, the only difference is, it's the final step in the approval process.
Councilman Stychos.
During the, when you spoke the first time after Mr. Jocelyn spoke...
Yeah.
I thought that at the very end, you said, if there's a conflict between the comprehensive plan and zoning, zoning controls, is that what you said?
What happened is, out of the East Providence case, there's always been an argument among planners and among lawyers as to what controls for the...
Mr. Lapola, speak to me, speak in the microphone.
What controls under the land use law? There's a requirement that zoning be consistent with the comp plan, in East Providence, there was zoning that was inconsistent with the comp plan, and the Planning Commission turned down the subdivision, basically, it was inconsistent, and they went to court, and the court basically upheld that it had to be consistent with the comp plan. Subsequent to that, because there's still a lot of problems with that, the state changed the Comprehensive Plan Act, the law that governs us, and basically, what it lays out is a procedure, which we're not under, because in terms of the, the old one said you brought it into within eighteen months, the new law says you designate a timeframe, a reasonable timeframe to do it, and you do it by then, but the law also says is that if you don't bring zoning and planning, or the comprehensive plan into consistency within a period of, I think it's a year, don't hold me on that, then zoning controls, which is the way I always thought it was or should be. So, under the new law that was passed just this last year, last year, or after that case, 2011, is if zoning and the comprehensive plan isn't brought into conformity by the Comprehensive Plan Act, the zoning ordinance will control.
Well, let me, I, okay, so the first, the first point you're making is that what Mr. Jocelyn was saying, that case, the East Providence case, since that case, the legislature changed the law.
Yes.
And that, so let's say we have, and I, I know this is what I worry about, about the comprehensive plan, that we have some lot that is zoned residential, but in the, in the comprehensive plan, it's been designated commercial, some type of commercial.
Yes.
All right, so the, and we, we've been told a number of times by the lawyers that if the, the landowner comes in and wants to change the zoning, in this instance, from residential to commercial, to comply with the comprehensive plan, that the city council doesn't have an option. We have to, we have to bring zoning into compliance with the comprehensive plan. Now, are you saying something different than that?
No. I mean, what I, what I, it's, this is land use law, nothing is ever straightforward. What the law says is that, and then our charter makes it, sort of plays in, and that's more local, what the state law says is that, right, under the old one, I'll just use it, within eighteen months of approval by the state, the city is to bring the, it's zoning into consistency with the comprehensive plan. The, Judge Jocelyn, Fred Jocelyn's right, the court said there's no penalty attached if you don't do it, because there's no penalty in the law, is if you do not do that, what the law, like, I'm going to give away the secrets, if, right now, is they'll come in and says that, that is the law, that is actually, I will tell you, the law says is that, that you're supposed to make the comprehensive plan and zoning consistent, is if in the exercise of your legislative function, you choose not to rezone a particular property, somebody comes in for, it's supposed to be, um, commercial, it's residence, you want to keep it commercial, or residential, is if you deny that zone change, there is no appeal of that zone change to the court system, that stance, because the Supreme Court has said, it's a legislative function, and the zoning, the Comprehensive Plan Act and zoning provides no appeal of a denial of a zone change. What would then happen is I would have to change to be consistent, we would have to change the comprehensive plan, future land use plan, to make zoning and the land use plan consistent. It's never easy. You are required to be consistent, is if you choose not to, to rezone a piece of property, that's not appealable, unless you violate due process.
All right, well, I would like something by the, a piece of information, do you have, I would like a list of the landowners who requested changes in the comprehensive plan.
It's in the comprehensive plan.
Of the ones that requested it?
It's in the comprehensive plan. Because when we did this, I specifically, and then that was at all the public hearings, and I can remember specifically we did this, because Councilman Livingston asked me to put in the ones that we didn't approve, is there is a list in the comprehensive plan of all the requests that landowners came in to me for a change in the future land use map, and I listed those and what we changed it to, and then I also presented it at the public hearings to the city council.
Okay.
So that's in the comprehensive plan. I can give you a copy of that page if you want it.
So, we have a... And again, we'll restate that motion. The motion is to...
Postpone. Yes, that's correct.
And, and give the date.
And whatever the date is of the next council meeting.
No, no, no. September 24th.
So, there's a motion to September 24th, and a second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. I want to remind you, before we go on, we still have an executive session to go into also, so, don't forget that. I'm pleased to present to you, by the way, were there any other members of the public wanting to speak on an undocumented item? There being none that's closed? I'm pleased to present to you, we had a sad occurrence, as mentioned earlier in the meeting, you know, the loss of Steve Warner. Roy Damiano came forward, he's been a member of the Audit Committee for, going on two years, two and a half years now, and brings a lot of similar experience to Mr. Warner. It's a difficult position to, to fulfill, because it requires that you be a CPA, first of all, and you'd be willing to dedicate some, some time away from, from your practice to accomplish this. It's very crucial to the, the actions and the, the decisions of the council, so, I'm not going to go, you have his, his resume, it's, it certainly fits a lot of the similar parameters that we had with Mr. Warner, so, and this is a council appointment, so, with that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Roy Damiano to the internal audit deposition for the city council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any, any discussion? He is here, and he will come forward for an oath if we approve him. Roy, would you like to come up to the microphone and answer some questions? State your name and address.
Roy Damiano, 55 Manor Road, Cranston, Rhode Island.
Yes.
How you doing, Roy? Just a quick question regarding, you know, the position and actually the workings of the, the city computers and the system here. Are you familiar, or familiar with, with our system as far as accessing data through, through our, through, I think we have, what do we use? Admins, are you familiar with that system?
No, but I'd have to work with the finance director and the controller to gather an understanding of it.
All right. Yeah, because I know, I know it's, it's a very, you know, there is a separation when it comes to, you know, I mean, you work for the council, the council, I mean, there's, and, and you have certain responsibilities and powers to go into departments and go into those systems, look up the information you need that we request and things like that, and I mean, not that the administration, but there has to be a certain amount of, of being able to look, you know, get what you're looking for, from which we request, so, I guess my question would be, not knowing the system, is there a, who's going to teach him, like, how's he going to learn to, I mean, you're going to be taught by, you know, the administration staff, which is fine, but I mean, there's just a lot of things that need to be, know how to get at, and I want to know, how is he going to, is there like a manual, can we call in the company to come in and teach, you know?
It's not necessary. Through the chair.
Yes.
I know Mr. Damiano from the Audit Committee, and we've had a good working relationship in that committee, same as Mr. Warner, and we always provided Mr. Warner with a PC and access to any reporting that he wanted, and we'll provide the same to Mr. Damiano, plus a desk, and we will be more than happy to show him how to go into the system, not tell him what to look for, but how to get into the system, so he can determine what type of reports he would like to run.
And it's fairly simple?
Yes, it is.
It's a fairly simple system?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Especially the new system that we've already implemented about a year or so ago. So what he'd be looking for, he'd be looking for revenues, expenditures, detailed reports, things of that nature.
And Roy, you feel comfortable with that? You feel that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So I don't see it being an issue, council.
Councilman San Maria.
Thank you, Council President. To follow up on the Vice President's question, same thing with the school department, I know I ask Steve a lot to get documents from the school department.
Okay, the school department, we're in the admin system, the school department has Munis, I would have to, you know, introduce Mr. Damiano, or maybe he already knows Mr. Balducci, but he would have to work with Mr. Balducci or a member of his staff to get access there.
Okay.
Or if he wanted certain things provided to him, I will tell Mr. Balducci to provide it.
That's good enough for me, thanks.
Any other questions? Councilman Donnie.
Thank you, President Lupino, and good to see you, Roy, welcome. This is actually a question to the Council President, I should know the answer to this, so I apologize. Council President, is this appointment, is there a term to this appointment, is, does the, does Audit serve it, the will of the council?
He serves at the pleasure of the council, the sitting council, so he is subject to reappointment or at, in January.
Thank you, thank you.
And Mr. Damiano is aware of that, he knows that, so he's on a, I think it's, it's good, he's, he's got some experience, if I might speak, he's got some experience on the Audit Committee, he has a relationship with Mr. Strom, he will develop a relationship with Mr. Balducci, he is still, he understands, I sent him all the, all the background qualifications and the duties and his powers to him, so he understands that fully, it's just going to matter of being, weeding things out for the next few months, and hopefully he'll, he'll prove to you that he can continue after that.
I think Mr. Damiano is an excellent choice, Council President, I just wanted some clarification on what we were voting on tonight, thank you.
Councilman Stychos.
Is the, the salary for the position the same that Mr. Warner was receiving?
Yes, if you remember correctly, when Mr. Warner was first appointed, it was a part-time position, hours were submitted, I don't have the exact figure on what the amount was, but he was also given benefits. Now, when Mr. Warner switched to Cumberland, who gave him benefits, that went away, so Mr. Damiano was on the, knows that he would not be receiving benefits, but he would be receiving a stipend based on the yearly allocation to that audit deposition. Do you have that figure, Mr. Strom?
For the last two fiscal years, Councilman, it was $35,000 is the figure that's in the budget book. Prior to that, it was 40.
$35,000, and then...
Currently.
And then Mr. Damiano would be prorated from, from this point to the, to his, the end of his appointment, is that how it works?
I would believe there would be a lap of, the lapse of time between Mr. Warner and Mr. Damiano, but then from when Mr. Damiano assumes his role, he will get whatever that salary figure is going forward. So there will be theoretically, and I hate to say this, because it's an unfortunate situation that happened, there will be a savings on that line item for this fiscal year.
And that's the lap between the passing of Mr. Warner and the appointment of Mr. Damiano.
That's not the way we want to save money, Councilman, honestly, but that's the fact.
Mr. Stychos.
I just want to kind of put this out there, that, that, I find the salary a little high, and I just want to put that out there now, because I don't think you and I know each other, and I don't, if I raise that in the future, I just want you to know that it has nothing personal to do with you. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Arquetteau.
Thank you, Council President, I have just a couple of questions for Mr. Damiano, through the chair, because I'm chairman of finance, we're going to have to be working, the budget is over, but there may be supplemental adjustments to the budget, we just have a bidder for the police station, so, that money that's coming, we'll have to decide what transpires. So my question to you is, your work schedule, are you going to be able to allocate time during the week?
Yes.
Is it going to be mornings, afternoons? What is your schedule like? I guess that would be my question.
Well, first of all, I'd like to try to get a feel as to where Steve was, and then go forward, but I think initially, I'd have to put in some hours, I'm prepared to do that.
If, in your schedule, are you free more so in the mornings, or in the late afternoons?
No.
Or is there a day you don't work during the week?
Whatever, whatever it takes.
So you can leave your business at...
Yeah.
Okay, which is a good thing, and that's what I'm leading to. And then I'm sure you have, like, cell phone, for any member of this council to reach you if we have any question pertaining to finances, correct?
Yep, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Favica.
Thank you, Council President, very briefly, I've had the opportunity to know Mr. Damiano for a number of years, so I know his qualifications, and I have no problem making the recommendation, that's why I made the motion to approve, so, I think everyone will be very pleased with his work.
Thank you. And no further discussion, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly, do you solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto the, unto and support the Constitution of the United States, this state, and support the laws and Constitution thereof, and the Home Rule Charter, and ordinances of the city of Cranston, and you will, will well and truly execute the office of which you have been appointed, or until another being appointed. until another be engaged in your place, or until you be legally discharged therefrom, so help you God. Congratulations. Congratulations. Are there any reports of city officers? Colonel, are, are you here for a city officer? Are you here to address us?
No, sir.
Okay. Just want to make sure, you've been sitting there patiently, so, or impatiently, whatever.
Thank you, Council President. Cranston Fire Department Lieutenant Kevin Hodnett has requested to be continued in service for one year. Lieutenant Hodnett has met all necessary requirements, and we urge you to approve.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Cranston Fire Department Lieutenant Kevin Ansley has requested to be continued in service for one year. Lieutenant Ansley has met all necessary requirements, we urge you to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Are we going to go on to Council President, Communications? We already talked about the audio system report.
Yep. The chair shifted on.
I see nothing under Council Member Communications, are there any Council Member Communications? Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. To the, through the chair to the administration, I'll wait till Jerry gets up. Jerry, any update from the state, on the state highways? Nothing's been done. That the weeds are getting taller and taller. Are we on a time schedule, or they're going to wait till the snowfall comes, or?
To answer your question, I have not gotten a response back from the state. That's correct.
Not, not even a response?
No.
Wow.
And if, if the Councilman would request, I'll be happy to place that request again.
I would like, like that very much. Jerry, again, another thing, Sebo Park in, probably know it's on Florida Avenue in the back, I've got a few complaints from the constituents that it's in bad shape condition-wise. I was wondering if we could have someone go by and look at it, vandalism, kids hanging out at night.
Which park was that, sir?
Sebo Park.
Sebo Park.
That's the same park that the neighbors don't want, that was designed as a ballpark, and the neighbors don't want kids to play ball there, so.
I don't think it's an issue of kids playing ball, I think it's, it's more detailed, so if you could... And last but not least, the safe routes to school, and as you know, we got a complaint from a neighbor over by Stone Hill, I went over to look at the sidewalk, it, the stanchion is stuck in the middle of the sidewalk, and the, the sign's about five, six feet high. My question is, if there's children walking to school, and there are three abreast, one of them's going to have to walk into the street, which kind of takes away the safe routes to school moniker, is there any way that can be put either in the grass or somewhere else? It's smack in the middle of the sidewalk.
Uh, you're right.
I think it's a bit, a bit of overkill, and, and, you know, I don't want to see anything happen to a child, and I think placing this sign where it is, something could happen to a child.
Yes, sir, I am familiar with the situation, I did speak with the constituent, we did send an engineer out to look at it, and we are somewhat constrained, and we're constrained from a number of standpoints. One, those signs have to be in a, in a semblance of distances apart, because there's several new signs that had to go in as part of the safe routes to school. And secondly, it has to be in the city's right-of-way, we're, we're not going to put it on his land, of course, it has to be in the right-of-way, and it has to be so far from the curb. So we didn't have a lot of options, and what we were able to successfully do for that property owner is there was originally planned for two signs on his sidewalk, and we were able to adjust them both directions and limit it to one. How much further we can go, I don't know. But there does have to be a safe distance from the curb.
Now, when I talked to the gentleman, the engineer, that he said that it was designed by our previous traffic engineer.
That's not true, the whole safe routes to school system was designed by an outside engineering firm.
Did they do a, did they do a visual look at it, or did they do it from paper?
Well, yes, that was, no, they had to visit every site in order to design these, these safety measures.
Well, my concern again is if, if the kids are walking to school and they have to step in the street, I think it takes away from the intent of safe routes to school, so.
Well, first of all, they wouldn't have to step in the street, and secondly, the overall improvements for the safe routes to school far outweigh the fact that somebody may have to step around a street sign now instead of just walking straight down the sidewalk.
Okay.
Anyone else on the Communications? Is there any old business?
There's none.
There was a request originally for a, an executive session, is that request now withdrawn?
Yes, Council President, I'm withdrawing the request.
Make certain that the solicitor notifies Kelly Sheridan that a session did not occur, that he could not be here. Introduction of new business.
We have proposed ordinance 8-12-1, an amendment of Title 10, Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic for a Stop at Grace Street and Pond Street, to be referred to Safety Services for a hearing on September 10th. We have proposed ordinance 8-12-2, an amendment of Title 12, Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic for a crosswalk at Narragansett Boulevard at Chiswick Road, to be referred to Safety Services for a hearing on September 10th. We have a petition filed by Olympia Holdings LLC for a, an amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Zoning, A Change of Zone for Phoenix Avenue, to be referred to the Ordinance Committee for a hearing on October 11th, 2012. We have the following new claims to be referred for a hearing on September 24th. Property damage claim of Daniel Beltrain for an alleged incident on June 20th, 2012, a property damage claim from Alfonso Freitas for, from an alleged incident supposedly on August 6th, 2012, a property damage claim of Susan Andrew from an alleged incident on August 3rd, 2012, a property damage claim of Carolyn, I will spell this one, C-A-O-U-E-T-T-E, from an alleged incident on July 28th, 2012, a property damage claim from John and Pamela Lawson from alleged incident in August of 2011 as a result of Hurricane Irene. And that's all I have.
Is there a motion to refer the new business to the committees as stated by the clerk?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, under discussion, clerk, please be aware of the timing on those committees because of the, we, we said we would be able to adjust times due to the agenda, so, I think you said there's not much on ordinance, so if we can adjust those times for the advertising of those meetings, move them up. Want to remind, okay, take a vote on the, on the referral.
Yes.
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 Just a clarif, clarification, Councilman Stychos, we originally had ordinance at 6 and finance at 7, but we are allowed to adjust that if there's a lack of a, any substantial items on ordinance, so we can make it 6 and 6:30.
Yeah, I just, I think those, those issues that we tabled at the last meeting, all those zoning issues, those are pretty...
They're going to be on ordinance, you're correct.
Those are pretty heavy, so we shouldn't shorten the meeting.
Does anyone have anything else? I got to remind the council, I, I was rather disappointed, and, you know, the, the burden fell on Councilman Stychos because we did not have a quorum at a couple of the committee meetings. I, I could not cancel a, a meeting ahead of time because I didn't, we could not get a hold of one particular council person, and I couldn't cancel ahead of time, yet we both came here and sat, and we couldn't have a meeting because we didn't have a quorum. I would ask at this time the, the minority leader to reconsider a couple of appointments on a couple of committees. I'm not getting cooperation from a particular individual, and I would like that person to be replaced because I am not, that person is not being cooperative, nor is, nor is that person attending the meeting, so please be advised that I'm, I'd be looking for another appointment on that, on those committees. It's not fair to the other members, and it's certainly not fair to me, because if I have to make up the, the quorum, I'm not being notified in a timely manner. You know, 10 minutes before the meeting is not enough time for me to, you know, get here and, and make that quorum, it's not, it's not fair to anyone, nor is it fair to the public who have to come to these meetings and, and plan for that, so I would like that to be accomplished.
Council President, a clarifying question on that. Is your concern the notice, or is your concern the attendance?
Both. There's been no attendance, but there's also been no notice. You know, others who, others who are not going to make the meetings notify the clerk, the chairperson, and myself ahead of time so that I can make that third or fourth person, whatever the case may be on that committee, so I wish you would consider that and have a discussion with your, with your minority caucus.
Again, with all due respect, Council President, the attendance issue at committee meetings is not isolated to the minority appointment on that committee.
It is not, but in that particular evening, it was a, it was a minority non-attendee that, that created the lack of a quorum. One we couldn't get a hold of, but one just never responded, so, if you could. That being said, our next regularly scheduled meeting is September 24th. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All, all in favor?